All right. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's 5:00, March 30th, 2023, for the special called meeting. I would like to ask David Coleman for a word of prayer, please.
That's about it. Oh God, we just want to thank you today. We thank you for our wonderful city and county, Lord. And Lord, we're just asking you to be in this meeting, that we get an understanding and be on one accord tonight, Lord. And we thank you for all officials that's here tonight, and for the One is out. And Lord, we just give you the praise and the honor and the glory. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you. Before you have the minutes of the last meeting, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting after y'all review or any questions or deletions.
I make the motion, we accept the current meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mary Bell, second it by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Okay, Tara's out today. She had some other things that came up, so we're gonna go on past the city attorney. Before you have your financial reports for the bank balances and income and statements and payable accounts, after they're reviewed, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the financial reports as read.
I'll make the motion to accept the financial.
Motion by Mary Bell.
I'll second it.
Second by Jerry Lichten. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Action required, no business ordinance 2023-01 Business License. You have an updated copy that the city attorney has gave you. With that being said, I'll entertain the emotion or corrections, deletions, comments.
Well, I would make a motion that we table this, because I'd like to read it all the way through again, because there are numerous changes that we made tonight. I would like that opportunity.
I'll second that motion. I'd like to review the changes as well.
So I've got a motion to table this for review for the next meeting. I have a first by Mary Bell, second by Stacia. So this will give, I guess y'all want the opportunity to review this because you just got it a while ago?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I've got a first and second on tabling this to the April, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, April meeting, um, to go over this. So I got a first and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. All right. Okay, um, if you go through your packet, we've had two bids on our mowing at Ellis Park. After review, um, you've got one from, let's see, Jordan Overstreet. I think it's, is it Law &amp; Order or something like that?
Law &amp; Order.
Yeah, for $1,350. The other one is Beaverdam Emergency. And his was 126888. I will ask for a motion to accept one of these bids.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, Jordan is the one who has done it previously.
Yes, ma'am.
And how long has Mr. Dance been in business doing that?
No, I don't, I don't know that one for sure, to be honest with you.
Does that include that bank on the card?
Yes.
For both of them?
Uh huh.
I'd make a motion to go for the 1,350.
I second that motion.
So that's the law.
Mr. Overstreet.
Mr. Overstreet.
They've done a good job for us in the past.
Yeah, he's been doing it, doing a good job.
Consistent.
I have no complaints with him. He sees something, he lets Lisa know, or lets me know, you know, we get it took care of.
So I have a motion by Stacia.
No, Jerry.
I'm sorry. You got it all, I'm sorry. To go with Law &amp; Order, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Okay.
What is it?
Yes, that was the lowest bid.
No, it wasn't the lowest bid.
We went with our previous service, because they're consistent.
Okay, so if you look through your packets here for the, no, that's, is that in our packets there?
There's nothing there on there.
Okay, there's nothing on there. I'll explain this. On the multi-use trail engineer fees for 75,000, that is our bike trail that we've got the grant for, and basically, we will get half of that back once this starts the process. But this is the first initial project piece that we gotta put together. This is the phase that we're taking on this. And I'd like to ask if we could get the 75,000 out of occupational to pay for this engineer fee to get the process rolling.
I'll make the motion that we take it out of occupational to get this trail engineering going.
Can we have a real quick discussion?
Yes.
Question?
Yep.
And I'm for it too. Previously, this was a gentleman's agreement, right? Is this more contractual now?
Yeah, it's.
Just for the engineering fees only?
Yeah. It's engineer fees only.
Okay.
And once we pass, if we pass this, I want to follow up with that question right there in itself.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I got a first and second to take this, that occupational pack, to pay for this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye. To follow up with that statement, I would like to have discussion, if you want to have discussion with that. This is very important to the city to get this project going.
Yes.
Um, with that being said, with or without the help of the county, I'd like to entertain the motion that we set back $6,250 monthly out of occupational, with or without to get this project completed. That is saving grace to get this project going.
How much, 6,000 what?
6,250. And, and that's just a handshake type deal, uh, but that's just something that I think it's important to the city to go on. This is a what-if's case scenario. This is not saying that we have to, but I want to secure this, basically.
So if we do though, and we secure this, and we start the project, and then other people fall through, are we liable for the entirety of the project?
Yes.
What's the total of that?
I think.
We're not, uh, just for engineering fees.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Just for the 75,000.
Yeah.
6,250 times 12 is 75,000.
So it'd be like 1, 1,97 or something like that? Yeah. So that's, that's the whole entirety of it.
Okay.
But the 75,000 is for, is just engineering only, and that's all the?
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, that's just, like I said, this is a worst-case scenario, but I feel like it's important to secure that, just in case.
Okay. Carrie, go ahead. All right, interrupt whoever made a motion.
Did I make the motion?
You did.
I don't know.
No, you just know where I'm at.
I don't think nobody made the motion on that yet.
Oh, on the occupational taxes?
For the 6,200.
I will make a motion that we set that money aside for the completion of the issue.
Just in case, I mean.
Revenu's father, yeah.
I've got a first and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye. Thank you. And I think it's, I think it's important to see these projects go through instead of having to give money back. Um, you know, we, we hope the county helps us out in the next little bit if we, if, and we'll, we'll hold them to it, but more importantly, we gotta go on with the project. All right, thank you. Okay. In front of you in your package, um, it's the Ellis Park Project Improvements. I want to also thank Councilman Jeff Remfro and David Coleman and Tony Remfro. They've been going to the Ellis Park. They've got ahold of Jeremy Crow and them, and they've been doing some work to the grounds, trying to get people back out there. They are gonna mold the insides, do dirt work, and so they're wanting to see these projects go forward.
So, um, do we need to hold off on too much heavy stuff though, until we get that grant? Because we can't be retroactive in any kind of, uh, any kind of reimbursement?
Far as like?
Demolition or anything? Are we just gonna go on?
Yeah, 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 yeah. We can always find something else to follow up on that grant with, so that, that'll still be okay. Um, so here's, yeah, you got that right there. And then there should be a picture on the backside.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is, this is just a proposal, um, to purchase this playground equipment, 45,194. And folks, this has already been allocated for the Ellis Park. It's already in a separate account for that. Um, so this budget will be running out in July, um, so it's up to you if, if you would like to go on and purchase this equipment.
How much is in that account?
Do we lose that money if we don't?
No, no. You don't lose that, no. No, it was just something that was itemized to, for the park itself.
Do they have an idea when this equipment might come in, or is it?
So, he's on his honeymoon right now. He's in Cancun, I think. Once he gets back, I can have it ordered within four to five weeks.
Well, we'll.
And the, and the basic thing is, is if we do this, Jason and them can take the old stuff out and get that off.
The thing is, right now, a lot of them, they're all.
Yeah, there's a lot of them anyways.
We put stuff up, keep them following off of it, they keep the cords off, they're like tore up. There's nothing, you know, there's nothing there on that. And we got swings in the Eagles mess, but another thing, I'd really like to get it on, because that's just a liability, you know, we've already done through one lawsuit on it.
Yeah.
And I'd like to get it.
So you know where this is gonna be sitting then?
Yeah, basically in the existing spot where the other playground equipment will be.
Yeah. No more patient previous service. Have you been to the playground? No?
No. He was four last time he was there.
So we're not asking for grant money for that?
Right.
Grant money for other stuff?
Yeah, we can still add on, but that's what I told Jeff.
That's one of those.
So I told Jeff, if we purchase this, the playground guy can get us everything to blend in with this and expand that on out.
I'd like to make the motion, go ahead with it as soon as possible.
I second it.
Okay.
A third.
We've been talking about it long enough.
Yeah, I mean, it's a step in the right direction.
It is.
I mean it.
It's a step, so, yeah.
We need to look into something, getting rid of that fence and putting a nice fence up over there and all that.
Yes.
The old fence, you know, we need to look down, we're replacing it.
Yes.
You know, so we gotta, I gotta work on it.
Okay.
Yeah. Jeff has taken the lead with this, even though I was kind of appointed, and I'm not.
And he's done, y'all all have done a good job on this. There's a lot of involvement in.
They should have bashed the lights.
Okay, so that would be what we apply for grant funding for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, 30,000 dollars.
I think it was like 36,000 for the light, so.
Okay, you got that quote.
Good deal.
I think it's, I mean, uh, I just think it's a good thing.
It's time, it is.
Uh, you know, we've had that other plan for so long, let's just, let's just move on past that.
There's other guys that's gonna take care of the infield and all that.
Yeah, and that's what I told them.
They're gonna bring in clay and all kinds of stuff, but I didn't tell them that.
Move it farther up, you know, take care of the infield, so we don't have to worry about.
Right, okay. All right, I have a first and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Thank you all. I know it's important.
We'll talk tomorrow on all protection methods, but I'll get their stuff down as soon as we can.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay, the last thing that's on the agenda for new business is the municipal order, 2023 discretionary expenses. Basically, that, that was the last discussion at the meeting to up it to 5,000. So we just have to have a motion second.
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Tony.
A second.
Second by Stacia. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Okay, um, we have some visitors. Would y'all like to say anything? Y'all have anything that y'all need to?
Well, actually, yes.
Bring to the table?
You're real sure about this now?
We wouldn't let Annie talk, but she had to leave. But I know you tabled the discussion for the business licenses, and I know that that's something that some of you want to read about, but I think you probably had time to, you know, at least read that section. But the part is that if you're gonna use your occupational tax to pay for all these other things, wouldn't that help bring more money into your occupational tax fund? You did charge for food trucks coming into the county. I mean, it makes sense to me. And then if you've got this money you want to do other projects with, that helps to build that fund. So that's, you know, that, that's what, one reason that I see that. Another reason is, you know, we have very few downtown businesses, very, very few. We have very few people that come to our downtown businesses because there's nothing else here. If we bring other businesses in from other counties, and they don't leave any of their money here with our county, that's taking away from the people who live here, who work here, who play here, who want to go to Ellis Park, who want to go out to the county park, who want to do things here in our county. And these other places, they come in, they do their business, they play, and their money goes back to where they came from. So that's another reason that I think that you should pass that ordinance. Another reason is, we pay taxes, property taxes, business licenses, all kinds of money to our city and our county. They don't, and it's not fair, and it's not right. And they take away, let's say, I know Annie told us it was 75%.
She lost 75% on Thursday when Sheldon's here. She sent two employees home, they lost out, she lost out, um, yeah, she said it was, yeah, 75%.
She said by the time she paid all of her bills and everything that day, she made 20 dollars. You know, we can't support our businesses in downtown Hartford, watch that house.
And we're really, like, I don't know, some of them are like a fundraiser, but like 10%?
That's all they do, so.
Like, because we asked, and they said, well, we only make 10%. Well, and Annie too has said that she would offer fundraisers, and she's put it out there, and people haven't, you know, accepted. So I mean, you know, she would do a fundraiser, but you know, if they're only getting 10%, that's not a whole lot of fundraising, you know, if they don't, I mean, they get us businesses up anyway, but they, you know, I still, you know, they could, they could do more as far as accepting help from us for a fundraiser, because Annie's offered and they've not taken it up, and make more money, you know, locally. So, and, and, and we understand with the fundraising, but you know, they, they're not fundraising every week they're here. They're not fundraising every week.
When they're here three times a week.
Yeah.
And like, one of the nursing homes has had somebody every single day for the last three weeks. So I'm just saying, you think about that, multiply that by a business fee for the city, you're adding money to your funds that you can use for things around the city, plus it's at least something that they're supporting our city with. Right now, they're not giving us jack crap, okay? Nothing. And it's, it's just not fair to those of us who put so much into our daily work. And I'm just telling you like it is, guys, we can, we don't have to stay here. We can go to another town, you know? Or we can close. But we don't want to. We love our city. That's the whole reason we, you know, started this.
But you know, I think there's a reason why they don't go to Beaverdam. I mean, I, I'm not sure, but I think Beaverdam has some ordinances against that, but plus they're having to pay three more percent on top of that.
So I just want you all, when you're reading it, to think about your businesses here too,
because it cuts deep, it really does. And, you know.
And we don't care that they come in some, but we need to level the playing field, and they, you know, they should have to pay what we have to pay as far as that. And then maybe, you know, restrict them that they're not here parked out front every week, once a week. I mean, we have something else, you know, like we have merchandise that helps us, but Annie doesn't have anything. It's food only for her, that's it. You know, so I, you know, I'm sure it probably hurts her more than, you know, it does, because when you're strictly just food, so, you know, we just want you to consider it a little bit, and just think about it, you know, we don't want to be an uninviting city as far as other businesses and stuff, but you know what? If, if that, if that food truck wants to go, there's a, a empty building four doors down from us, we would gladly welcome them to put a restaurant right there. We would love for somebody to go in that space. You know, if they wanted, you know, if they're doing a good business in Ohio County, come put us something right there. Come put a restaurant there, we would love that. We need a night restaurant in Hartford. We would love for somebody to open something up. You know, next door is available for us. It's not a big enough space for that, but we would love a bakery or, you know, anything to go, you know, we've got some empty spaces we'd love for some people to go into. You know, maybe that's what we need to encourage as far as, you know, some of these food trucks.
Because the more people we can get downtown, the better it is for all of us.
So my question, are you against it for nonprofits as well? I mean, you just don't think food trucks are a good idea, period, in our city? Or you just want some?
We don't mind food trucks, we just want some equity, okay? So you think about all the money we pay, and they just come in and sit there, and they take everything away, and they're, they're not responsible or liable for anything. And then there's a state, um.
Yeah, I, I took it.
There's a state law that says that.
Yeah, this is, says, what are the requirements for a food truck in Kentucky? And this says, this was, is per Kentucky government. All temporary food vendors must have a permit from the local health department. Permits are valid for up to 14 days at one location, as long as the operator remains in good standing, compliance with regulations. So see, I don't even think that our health department is inspecting them, or, like, we don't, they're coming from out of county, and we don't even know if they're inspected from anybody.
They inspected Brian, they're dead of.
Yeah, and you know, and to me, that's a little odd, because.
I think they do periodically.
I mean, he's, he's local, so you would think, but I'm.
Kind of took me off when.
Right, so there you go.
He was ready, he did.
Right, and look at all the out-of-town ones coming in. Have they been inspected? Do we, you know, do we know? No, we're not against them coming in. We just want them regulated, and they have to, you know, buy business permits and pay like we have to.
I mean, that, we're just asking for fairness. That's all we're asking.
And, and I think if we make it a little harder, they're not gonna come as much, but that's okay. I mean, I'm sorry.
It isn't with the citizens who enjoy them coming in.
Pardon me?
It isn't for the citizens who do enjoy them coming in.
You know, the citizens can enjoy them when they come in, but they can also enjoy them in other places too. They don't have to figure it out, they can go somewhere else and enjoy them. I mean, I'm just saying, Mary Bell, that it's not, it's not fair. You think about it. If you had your own business, and somebody was coming in and they were not paying a thing, and you've been working like a dog, you wouldn't like that either.
Had to pay school tax all my life, it irritated me to death, but it's fact, so.
But they do.
But it doesn't have to be, it can be more fair.
They have had to pay, right? Some? I mean, they don't just come and park, they have permits and such.
They do have permits, yeah.
And our current update is increasing those, it's my understanding, I didn't see the old ordinance. I wanted some changes made in the original, not to affect nonprofits. That, and I'm thinking, and I reached out to a cheer dad, and they made 200 dollars. Is that minimum? I mean, is that miniscule? Maybe. It's 200, 200 dollars they wouldn't have got from the board. And my, it's a bigger entity even than city, because that's site-based decision, council's making those calls, or, you know, recommending those to the board. Uh, and then I haven't reached out to the Foster Care Association, but I know that they set up in Bob's, and they have their ribeye sandwich sales, so my intent in having some updated changes was that it was not gonna affect any nonprofits or fundraising efforts. Now, if that lessens them, and they come into the city less, is that, I mean, we're not saying not at all, right? We're just saying less?
We're, yes, and we're not even against the fundraising, that's not even.
Right, that's not.
But when you've got an establishment and they're not fundraising, and they have a truck there every day for three weeks, that's, that's a hard one.
And, and I'm sorry, I don't know, who is that? Or when was that?
And who is that?
I don't, I haven't seen that.
Isn't seeing that true?
Seeing that true.
Oh, okay.
Well, I will say that one of the things that I see as, as a citizen, mayor of Hartford, whatever you want to call it, I believe that we should be protecting our business, businesses here in, in the Hartford, as well as in Ohio County. And like you said, you know, that might be an opportunity, if they did foresee a business growth here with that truck, they could find them a location to. So I see, I see the ins and outs to what's being said, and I think the, the council members really want to, because they just got it at 5:00 with the revised copy from, from Tara. So I think everybody understands where it's, it's at. Give them time to review it, and I think they're in understanding of the importance of your businesses, as well as any other businesses here. So I appreciate you all coming and voicing your opinions, because it does matter to us what, what you all do on the business side to help the growth for the city. So it is important, and we do hear you.
Thank you.
All right. I appreciate that too. Appreciate you all. Councilman members, discussion, Councilman David, do you have anything to bring to the Stacia, do you have anything to bring to the table for discussion?
No.
Mr. Lichten?
Either one of them not having anything.
Nobody has nothing.
Wait till he gets his name.
Oh, yeah. Mouth of South Bend.
Yeah. Mary Bell, do you have anything?
No, not really.
Mr. Remfro, do you have anything?
Trying to make me laugh at her, what?
Y'all have anything?
I just want to know, is everybody, how's town, downtown looking?
It looks great.
Really good.
I think.
Took you a little while to get the spring flags out, but it's.
Hey, yeah. Turn that off, Fred. Turn that off, bro.
We were still at season's greetings for a little while, but.
They mowed that lot, they mowed the little lot, and it looks good, is that still up there, do you remember?
Yes, it is.
Very pleased with city workers, thank y'all so much for all you do. It looks really good.
And that's, you know, that goes with all of our departments. I, I've tried to reach out to all of our department heads, every month, we try to have a monthly meeting with all our department heads. And they, and all of them are unique in their own ways, they're all doing above and beyond, and I think they're. On the rise of seeing good things. You know, I take Jason's crew for example. They get up of the mornings, and, and they get up on Wednesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays on that trash truck, and they don't have no complaints. Wouldn't that be a good lifestyle for everybody to live? That's the importance of what we do in this city, and I think that's unique in itself, police department, the fire department. I just see good things coming up out of all of them, and I do appreciate every one of them, as well as our councils members, so.
Mr. Mayor, we do want to voice our appreciation for the garbage crew, they have been amazing.
We have boxes out there, and we don't even, like, we don't ask them, we usually haul them up, and we can, and they're gone.
Yeah. I mean, it, it is one of those things that. But it is one of those things.
We offer free ice cream, come get some free ice creams while we tell them.
But it is, it is something that I, I, I want people to understand the importance of that job in itself.
Well, we do appreciate, because like I said, we might ask, and we have chased boxes sometimes where the winds blow.
Because in the hot summer days, it's, you know, in the cold winters, the rain.
We really do appreciate.
I mean, it's, uh. Oh, just an update. We had a, we had our first meeting yesterday on the Oktoberfest. We, we formed a committee, and I think. This is gonna be a good thing for the city, and I appreciate everybody that's involved in that, to get this ball rolling. We'll keep everybody updated, as, as things come forward on all that. Do I have anything else?
Why don't you, just a thought, and we got a hold of you here, to think of something, a happy meeting between, after Christmas and spring, of some kind of banners that we can change. You know, that'd be a thought to look at, because it's either that American flag, or gold from stretch winter, or stretch spring.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I would, we can get that done pretty.
You know, I did something, the job can start around what y'all want, you know?
Yeah. Also, I think you and Meredith has been working on the signs, maybe?
Hartford signs.
So, we're trying to phase that, because it's been out there forever, so. So, maybe we'll have something pretty soon on that as well. Alright.
Who do we call when streetlights go out?
Call, call Lisa.
One on fifteen forty-three, right there, turn in.
What do you do, they work sometimes?
It keeps going out all the time.
Let us know which one it is.
Like, they, it'll come on, and it'll stay on for a while, and then like the next night, it's not on.
Might be getting close to.
Also, for the public's information. You should hear the sirens tomorrow, tornado sirens. They are, should be up and running, and fixed, yes.
Tomorrow might not be a good day.
It'll be pretty windy.
I know, so, but that is something else that.
I think they're working, I talked to Charlie.
Yeah, I got an invoice on the one, the way one.
Please, somebody have a key on the outside, to where if we got to, and it's not working, somebody can manually. That's, that's called too.
I saw them out there working.
My phone goes up on. Alright, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I second.
First and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side, motion carries, thank you all.
Thank you all for coming.